All right, you ready?
You're ready.
We'll call this meeting to order. Please rise.
Oh, yes, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sheriff Weatherford. Our pastor tonight is Reverend James C. Johnson, Jr., who was born in West Tennessee to a Christian family. James Johnson attended Tennessee Tech University and graduated with a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration. And while at Tennessee Tech, he served as the Director of Music with the Wesley Foundation. Along with answering a call to ordained ministry within the United Methodist Church, he attended and graduated with a Master of Divinity from Memphis Theological Seminary. He has been the Senior Pastor at First United Methodist Church in Gallatin since 2016 and loves being involved with the community in Sumner County. James and his wife Carol have three children, Grace, Max, and Charlie. We're honored to have Reverend Johnson with us today. And y'all, we ask, as you know, our community's been through a very trying time the last few days, and we're so thankful for our first responders, our sheriff's deputies, and firefighters, and every EMS, everyone else who was out. We were very blessed to come through as we did, but we still want to be in prayer for those who have suffered and struggled in the past few days. Please keep Commissioner Mansfield and his family in your prayers. His dad is under hospice care and had a rough weekend. He was in the area affected by the tornado, and so we want to remember him in our thoughts and prayers as well. Thank you, Brother Johnson.
Let us pray. Oh, Lord, we do ask that you would bless this county commission and the citizens of Sumner County. When we have traveled through difficult storms, Lord, we pray for those who have responded first and those who woke up the next day, missing so much. Lord, we thank you that you lift up your face to us. Lord, may your face be turned toward those who are suffering today. And oh, God, may your countenance be lifted up, that when we come to the end of this day and this night, that you would be able to accept all that we have done, and that it would be for your glory and honor. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do you all join in the pledge of our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's check our roll.
Roll calls now open. Each commissioner, please record your presence.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right, we've got our regular agenda and our consent agenda. I will have everybody note that we have a corrected version for 2112-12. It's on the consent agenda. The numerical number was correct, but there was a typo on the, in the text, so that's been corrected, and you have a corrected version on your, on your desk. Is there a motion to approve our regular and consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Goode. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your minutes are in your packet. I'll wait for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Sullivan. Is there a second by Commissioner Graves? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have anyone from the public that signed up? Are any public comments?
Anyone wish to sign up that has not already?
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. All right, Tab Matthews, Mr. Tab Matthews, 110 Wheeler Street, Portland, Tennessee. You are welcome to come up, and you will have five minutes to speak. And I hope, I hope I said that right. Was it, is it? Okay, thank you.
I'll be called once.
Me too.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tab Matthews, Assistant Chief with the Highland Volunteer Fire Department. I, first off, want to thank Alan Driver for his help with the Emergency Services Committee. Chris Taylor is up on the Budget Committee. First off, also as well, thank you to everybody in this commission that supports not only us, but all the other volunteer fire departments in this county. We simply could not do the services we provide without y'all's support. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody, for helping us and supporting us. I'm up here today to discuss our apparatus issues we've been having. As of this year alone, to keep two of our three frontline engines in service, we have spent close to $15,000 to keep our trucks in service. According to EFPA 1911, which is the standards that we have to follow to be compliant with safety and other things, our engine should be taken out of service at 25 years. We don't have an engine that's less than 25 years old. Our current Engine 1 is 28 years old, our Engine 2 is 31 years old, and our Engine 3, which is owned by the City of Mitchellville, is 28 years old. So, we'd like to thank y'all for your support on this project, this capital project we're working on. It's been a long time in the making. I know other volunteer fire departments are working on those as well. So, we all need the support and the help with it, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. We'll try to answer the best we can. But most certainly, we appreciate the support with the project, and it's been a long time coming. So, that's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, that concludes our public, our recognition of the public. We'll move on now to reports of the chair. Your Veteran Service Report is in, is in, is on your, is in your packet. Let me just clarify, you know, when we went through the roll call, Mr. Becker is out sick tonight, and then Commissioner Taylor is out of state. And as I mentioned, please keep Commissioner Mansfield in your prayers. His mom and dad are in health struggles, and just keep him in your thoughts and prayers as well, and that's where, that's where they are tonight. We will, at this time, we're going to move the Hendersonville High School Junior ROTC recognition. As you know, we still have a large part of Hendersonville that's recovering from the tornado damage, and so we will honor them at a, at a different time in January. But I'm going to yield the floor now to Commissioner Stewart. Yeah, and Rebecca Miss Galyon, if you'll come on up with, with family or friends, or whoever you would like to bring up with you.
It's okay, Miss Galyon. Come on up here.[492.44][492.44](laughter) We have a proclamation tonight honoring Ms. Rebecca Galyon from the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in the regular session on this, the 13th day of December 2021, does hereby honor and congratulate Rebecca Galyon, Director of Veteran Services, for receiving County Service Officer of the Year for the Middle Region.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mansfield.[524.12][524.12](applause) Do you have anybody that you want to give a hand for?
No, I'm just kidding.
Absolutely. This is from you here.
First off, thank you so much for all your support, all the commissioners. I know you guys work really hard for your districts, and I have to say thank you to my amazing veterans. So, can I please have my veterans stand up? Please? I know, our office, we work really hard to take care of our veterans and our surviving spouses, and we continue to work very hard. I could not make this possible without our awesome veteran organizations and the support from our commissioners and everybody that loves our veterans. I know we've been working really hard this past year as coming director. We've been working very hard making sure we have a good reputation. We have a lot of successful wins, including getting a surviving spouse over $370,000 in back pay. All that money goes back to Sumner County. She is a resident of Sumner County, and she is putting that money back to, and it's well deserved and well earned. We're hoping to improve in 2022. I know we got a lot of stuff that we are looking to do. What we're really wanting to make sure is that we can touch all the veterans that need our help. Right now, we are a bit little backlogged, you know? We're setting appointments in the second and third week of January, so we're really working hard to make sure we get that one-on-one time with each and every veteran or each and every surviving spouse or surviving dependent that needs help. So, again, we're, we're really working really hard. Jeff, he's going to be our new CSO. He's been working really hard with all of our veteran organizations and keeping that support. Again, I'm so thankful and very humbled for this award. I appreciate it very much, but really, it's all because of the veterans. So, thank you so much.
All right, Rebecca, hold tight. Yeah, let's give her a round of applause.[648.32][648.32](applause) First, let me do some housekeeping. I think Mr. Stewart made the motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner DeWitt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And let me, let me just say, Rebecca, on behalf of the commission, thank you so much for the work that you do. You know, we live in a day and time where there are a lot of thanks and praises thrown towards our veterans, but you do the hard work each day of making sure that our veterans have everything that they need and everything that they're entitled to. And if you've ever had to deal with the bureaucracies involved in all of that, you know, it's, it's a tough challenge, and I know, like, I appreciate, and I think every commissioner here deeply, deeply appreciates the, the work that you do, first and foremost, for our veterans, but then always communicating to us anything that might be needed, and we appreciate that tremendously. So, you know, no one deserves this honor more than you, and we're, you know, just so proud of you and excited to see the great work that you do on behalf of our veterans. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, I couldn't do it with all you guys and all of our amazing veterans. So, thank you, guys. Thank you.[717.23][717.23](applause)
All right, we're going to yield the floor now to Commissioner Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I thank Mr. Worsham, if you and your family would like to come up.
Yeah. Mr. Bobby Worsham's family and friends, please join me.
Yeah, Kim, that means you too.
Don't they want to come up, Bobby? Don't they want to come up? There we go. Y'all step up for granddad and dad. Chief? Yeah, you bounced it out. Yeah, bounced it out to weight distribution. Are they coming up too? Okay, tonight, we're here to honor what has been the hub of the Shackle Island community for 120 years, Worshams Market. They've had, over the years, they had thousands and thousands of repeat loyal customers, the regular home of the Loafers and Liars Club that meet there regularly and swap lies and tales of valor. Not going to read all of this stuff to you right now, but I want to give you one example of the countless contributions Bobby Worsham and his family's made to that community. He's been a benefactor to those friends and neighbors that frequent his establishment, and I'm there quite often, and as Bobby knows, at least once a week. And several years ago, his registers were down, and I was there, and people would come up and try to pay for their purchases, and Bobby wouldn't let them because the registers were down, and he knew, he knew that they needed their stuff, and he let them take it without charge, didn't ask them to come back and pay for it. And that's just one of the countless examples of this family has made contribution to Shackle Island community. So, I think Chairman Langford would like to, before I read this, Chairman Langford would like to say a few words?
I was just thinking, Commissioner Foster, that I don't remember a time in my life when Worshams wasn't sitting there with Bobby and his family. I can remember, you know, probably my earliest memory was being terrified of his mother because I think she raised about half of us back in those days. And, you know, we were building, opening and building Beach High School when I was about seven or eight, and I can remember many a day that we would eat bologna sandwiches at Aunt Lila's. Kim, there's one story that I won't tell. We'll just keep that.[896.11][896.11](laughter) You can tell them later, but, but I think, you know, it was just a different time. I remember when, when they got Pac-Man, and we would wait for hours to put quarters into it and play Pac-Man. You know, the, the sandwich counter, just the stories, the laughter. The best story, though, and I'll limit myself to this one, is Mr. Hyde and my dad and Johnny Carver were going fishing one weekend, and my dad was notorious for putting the gas pump in, clicking the little thing on it, going into the store for two or three hours, and then coming out. Well, when he did it this time, he hopped in and he drove off with one of Bobby's gas pumps attached to his truck. And I think, you know, conservatively, it was shooting flames about 25, 30 feet in the air, and so my dad fishtailed and threw it into Bobby's front yard. And so, his remark at the end of it, after they got all the baking soda in the store and put the fire out before it blew up the store, he's like, man, he started off trying to blow up my store, and when that wasn't good enough, he tried to get my house.[950.12][950.12](laughter) But, but, you know, through the history that Commissioner Foster mentioned, the one thing that we all know and cherish are the memories, not, not just the, not just the things that we purchased or what, you know, what we got there, but the memories of the stories and the love and the very fabric of the community. Because the one thing that you know about Bobby is, is that he'll always be there for you through thick and thin. Whenever someone needs help, he's always there, and Shackle Island is what it is only because of Worshams Store, but also because of Bobby Worsham. And Bobby, it's an honor to, to share this with you tonight, and congratulations on a, and a wonderful, wonderful service to your community. Thank you.
Thank you. No worries.
Yeah.
Resolution honoring Bobby Worsham. Whereas Bobby Worsham, a third-generation proprietor of Worshams Market, the market purchased by his grandfather in 1901, a market that remained a staple in the Innesville community now for over 120 years, and whereas Bobby Worsham began working in the store with his father in 1971, taking over operations when his father passed in 1977, the store he continued to operate with pride until late 2021. And whereas Mr. Worsham, being a man of good character, highly esteemed, and connected within the Sumner County community, and whereas the Worsham family, meeting setbacks and hardships such as floods in 1952 and a fire in 2008, with their sponsor, rebuilding and resilience, and now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in its regular session this 13th day of December 2021, that this body does hereby express its appreciation and gratitude for the many years of volunteerism and charitable efforts of Bobby Worsham, and this body urges all the citizens of Sumner County to acknowledge his accomplishments and contributions, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Mr. Bobby Worsham, and I move to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Krueger and Commissioner Rhodes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Here's a copy of the resolution, and I have this medal for you, Bobby. It says, "Award of Excellence, Sumner County, 1786." Oh, great. Wear that proudly. Please, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I had several. First off, I appreciate Scott's comments forever. I've known him since he was, like he said, eight years old. At the time, we were building Beach High School out there, and we thought that was the greatest thing in the world, getting that high school. We all chipped in and, and worked on it. I remember we'd be bolting down bleachers and whatever, and I remember Judge Brown, y'all remember Judge Bethel Brown. I looked down, and he had his tractor, and he was spreading gravel out front. So, it was a real work effort to get all that done. But I've really enjoyed being in Sumner County all my life. Like I said, my grandfather started out in 1901, was there to 1996. My dad came in 30, I mean, 36, 1936. Dad came in 36 and was there to 77. I came in in 71, and right up until a couple of months ago, we sold the store. It was a great heartache to sell it, been in the family salon, but it was time to retire. One customer asked me, said, why, why'd you retire? And I said, after 120 years, I'm tired.[1177.83][1177.83](laughter) So, anyway, it was, and I've had a long life here in Sumner County. It's, it's been such a blessing to be here. I came out of Middle Tennessee, started working for Middle Tennessee State University. I graduated there, but before I did, I started working for Juneska here in town. Most of you know it as General Shoe. I started here in 60, well, 68, before I got out of school, before I graduated, they hired me, and never thought I'd get to come to Gallatin. The guy that was supposed to, I was going to Telahoma my first assignment, and the guy here, they decided that they needed to promote him to a larger plant. So, he went on to Telahoma, and I got to come to Gallatin. Boy, was that, that was the greatest thing because I already knew all the county officials because they always politicked with dad and whatever. I knew Porter Womack, everybody, and Mahalia Hughes, everybody in the courthouse. I, I mean, I had such an advantage starting out, even people that worked, I mean, that lived at home, worked there. So, I was up here for four years in Gallatin. I loved that, too. It's just been such a blessing to be in this county and work. I've worked on the county court here, and I was a member of the road committee for a while, and then I was on the 911 committee. So, I've served in, in the county government and got little, little experience of what goes on here. So, it's been a wonderful life. I've enjoyed it. We have so many stories. I never thought in my wildest dream that our store would hit the Lotto two years ago. The lady from the Lotto that runs it called me, and she said, we knew some store in Hendersonville had won it, but we didn't know who. She called, and she said, I'm calling to tell you that the Lotto was hit at your store, $198 million. That just blew my mind. I thought of all the places could hit, who would ever thought the Lotto would hit here? But we were lucky enough that it did, and it's just been a great experience out there. Loved every minute, minute of it, and just loved my life here in Sumner County.
All right, at this time, we'll have Mr. Hyde, and I think we have several others that are coming up to honor our Merrill Hyde State Champion Girls Soccer, Girls Soccer Team. And ladies, if y'all would like to come on up.
That's dedication.
It is a great privilege of mine to once again honor a state championship team for Merrill Hyde. This time, it's girls soccer. And I have to relate back to, matter of fact, Mr. Sullivan back there, and I were reminiscing about a trip to Kansas City to examine magnet schools, and that was one thing we did when I was Director of Schools, was travel to many, many magnet schools to determine what we wanted in a magnet school in Sumner County. And we didn't take a pattern from anyone. We took the very best of everything that we saw in magnet schools and put it together, and it seems to have worked so well. But I do recall that when we had the committee that Mr. Sullivan was on, saying to that committee, I insist on one thing, and that is that every student at the magnet school be involved in an athletic endeavor. And that was one thing that we would not bend on. Someone approached me shortly after that and said, you know, these are really, really smart kids, and they may not be so athletic, but you know, we've turned that curve, haven't we? We have several championship teams, and I am so proud of these young ladies and what they have accomplished on behalf of the magnet school and representing our county also. And I want to thank the Board of Education for their continued support of the magnet school, which is, is just a great place. I still have a daily involvement there, and I can tell you this, the one thing that I enjoy about the magnet school just about better than anything is the fact that the students get along for the most part, and they encourage each other, unlike a lot of other schools that you see where there's a lot of bickering and fussing, and you mess up and you get downed. They encourage each other. So, I am very happy, very pleased, and look forward to honoring these young ladies tonight. I have asked that Ms. Tucker come forward. She has a nephew there who plays on the soccer team, and she will award some medals and say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. I want to congratulate all these ladies on a fine job, and having had a child play high school sports and college sports, I know the dedication that it takes to keep up all your schoolwork and play a sport, and it takes quite an individual to be able to juggle all of that at the same time. So, congratulations, and I do have a medal for each one of you, but I do have this medal that goes in the display case at your school. So, if one of the coaches would like to take that on their behalf, congratulations.
I want to introduce Ms. Caroline Krueger, who has had several children to attend the magnet school, and she'll read a resolution.
Okay, this is certificate recognition, resolution honoring the Merrill Hyde Magnet School Lady Hawks Soccer Team for a record-setting season and winning the T double S double A state tournament. Whereas the Merrill Hyde Magnet School Ladies, Lady Hawks Soccer Team had the best season in program history with a record of 18, 2, and 1, and whereas the Lady Hawks had the best offense in the state with an average of 6.3 points per game, scoring a total of 118 goals in the season, with 14 of their 18 wins being shutouts, and finished their record-breaking season by dominating the T double S double A state tournament, where they handedly defeated the competition, having three shutouts during the tournament. And whereas Julia Lewis, Karina Steiner, Carly Zettergren, Sophia Currie, Mia Maxwell, Mary McIlwain, Sidney Riwa, Peyton Roth, Bella Henderson, Presley Altepeter, Sidney Ariza, Eliza Doyle, Chelsea Huff, Hadley Marshall, Lindy Shoulders, Ava Way, Tessa Hudgens, and Reagan Hudson all showed great dedication and commitment to their shared goal. And whereas head coach Jason Bentley and his assistant coaches Emily Boone, Mikey Oakes, and Megan Riwa spent countless hours supporting and encouraging this team every step of the way. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 13th day of December 2021, that this body does hereby congratulate the Merrill Hyde Lady Hawks Soccer Team, and be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and a copy of this resolution is to be provided to the Merrill Hyde Lady Hawks Soccer Team, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Krueger, seconded by Commissioner Tucker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Yeah, you did, you did such a great job last week. We, we need to hear that speech again.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mary, and I'm a junior and a captain on the Lady Hawks Soccer Team, and I just wanted to thank the county commission for recognizing us tonight. And without the support of you all, we really would not have been able to do it because knowing that, especially when we got to tournament season, that we had so much love and support going for us, it really drove us to... going for us, it really drove us to victory. But anyways, I just wanted to talk about one thing that I think is one of the most important of the many traditions that our team holds, and that's coming up with a team theme. So at the start of each season, we all come up with a team theme that kind of acts as a guide to keep our minds on the right track, to achieve the things that we're capable of achieving. And so this year, our theme was Faster, Higher, Stronger. So I think that we can really take that into two meanings, both the literal meaning in that we had to be faster, higher, and stronger than our competition to win games. But we can take that into a deeper meaning in that we had to be higher than the circumstances that we faced this season, especially as like COVID was relaying over into 2021 a little bit. We had to deal with that and a lot of unexpected injuries. So we had to rise above those circumstances. And we also had to be stronger than whatever might have been holding us back off the field. So whenever we step onto the field to play a game, we put everything in our school life, our friends' life, whatever, behind us, and we play for each other. And I really think that that is what drove us to victory this season, and I'm proud of each and every one of my girls on the team for that. But yeah, so thank you guys so much. Without the great coaching that we have, parental support, and especially the support from y'all, the county, we really would not have been able to do it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and congratulations.
All right, I'm going to ask our chairman to come down here. Seven years ago, when I ran for this position the first time, I really had no idea who Scott Langford was. I didn't know that he was a principal at White House High School. I didn't really know much about him. And I'm proud to say now that he is not only the chairman of our commission, but he is also a dear friend of mine. And so tonight, we are going to read a certificate of recognition honoring him. Is your family here? I didn't see Jane. Oh, I'm gonna, oh, there she is, Jane and the girls.
It's just Jane and Rebecca.
Y'all come on up. Sorry, I didn't see y'all back there. I looked for you earlier.
This is a certificate of recognition, a resolution honoring Mr. Scott Langford. Whereas Mr. Scott Langford, the Sumner County Schools Chief Academic Officer, has been named Supervisor of the Year by the Tennessee Department of Education. And whereas Mr. Langford is a highly committed and caring education professional who is dedicated to making Sumner County one of the best places to work, learn, and whereas Mr. Langford understands the many challenges facing faculty and students alike after spending many years as both a teacher and as a principal at White House High School before entering his current role. And whereas Mr. Langford, demonstrating superior abilities in managing and motivating students and faculty, evokes high standards and has a clear track record of exceptional gains in student learning. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county mayor on this thirteenth day of December, 2021, that this is inappropriate to acknowledge a debt of gratitude to Mr. Scott Langford for his contributions, diligent service, dedication, and loyalty to the Sumner County school systems, and I so move.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
I just want to take a moment because first, I'm deeply honored to receive this award from the Department of Education, but also here locally in Sumner County. Mr. Sullivan, I appreciate your committee recommending this for Michelle and legislative for this award, for this recognition. But you know, I was thinking about it. I've been really blessed. You know, the Apostle Paul talks in one of his letters about having letters written in red on your heart. And from, I went to my first Hendersonville High School football game when I was three days old. I'd just gotten out of the hospital and the first, my dad was head football coach at Hendersonville. We went to a football game. And I don't think I missed another school event until I went to college. And I've had the opportunity to be around so many countless numbers of great educators in Sumner County. And I literally grew up in, you know, riding around in cars to games and to competitions with the very best and brightest educational leaders that we've had in Sumner County. And it's just, it's an, it's an honor to be a part of that tradition. It's an honor to see the hardworking teachers and principals and leaders that we have every day and just to be a small part of the success of Sumner County. I think, you know, the greatest celebration I think that we see each and every day is, you know, like seeing our Merrill Hyde Soccer Girls up here. I'm going to recognize our leadership Sumner kids in just a minute. But if you get the opportunity, you will see the magnitude and the depth of the greatness of the kids in Sumner County. And that's all the way, you know, all the way from North Sumner, all the way to Lakeside Park, all the way to Madison Creek, all the way to Venus Stewart, every school in between in the county. We have exceptional people and it's just, it's an honor to be a part of that and to be a part of that story and that journey. So thank you all, I really appreciate it. Yes, sir.
I've got an announcement. I know I'm out of order, but please don't call me out.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Graves.
I'd like to invite everybody to Bethpage Christmas Parade Saturday, August, December the eighteenth. Lineup time is eleven. Starts at one. It's, it's one of the greatest parades in Sumner County. It could be the best.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. All right, I'd also like to take a moment and recognize our leadership Sumner. And Ms. Kim Baker has a group of kids, of young students, or of high school students from across the county. And this is an outstanding opportunity for them. They get to travel around the county and see how the county works and see a little bit of all the different facets, from government, politics, to business, to medical, to everything that we do in Sumner County. And both of my daughters had the opportunity to be a part of it and it's a great, great experience for our, our high school students. So Ms. Baker, if y'all would stand up, let's give them a round of applause. Now we have a public notice for Mr. Kemp to read.
The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on December thirteenth, 2021, at seven PM local time in the Bethel Brown Commission Chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building. Wilson, PUD, major plan amendment. Latty Wilson, represented by CSDG in the Third Commission District, represented by Alan Driver and Steve Graves. Applicant is seeking a major plan amendment of an existing planned unit development for the purpose of updating the table of allowable uses and addressing current zoning requirements. Subject property is located at 140 Rainier Drive, Galton, Tennessee, 37066, map 104, parcel 28.01, contains 12.9 acres in its own planned unit development. A copy of this notice is on file in the Sumner County Development Services Department in the Sumner County Administration Building. Anyone having interest or desiring to speak concerning this request is invited to attend the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. We'll call this meeting to order. Is there anyone that wishes to speak about this major plan amendment? Hang on one second, Mr. Good. All right, seeing no one wishing to speak, we'll call this meeting to a close. Mr. Good.
I'm going to say for the comments that those representatives you mentioned are here, if someone had a question, I'll make a motion we approve.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Good. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Graves. Is there any discussion? I see no one in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-one votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Motion passes unanimously. We have another public notice. I'll go back to Mr. Kemp.
Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on December thirteenth, 2021, at seven PM in the Bethel Brown Commission Chambers in the Sumner County Administration Building. Old Highway 31E Pizza Rezoning. Michael G. Francisco, applicant presented by James Lukens in the First Commission Voting District, Terry Wright and Mo Taylor. Applicant is requesting a rezoning from rural residential to commercial general. Subject property is located at 6460 Old Highway 31E, Bethpage, Tennessee, is on tax map 64, parcel 66.01, and contains 1.87 acres. A copy of this notice is on file in the Sumner County Development Services Department. Anyone having any interest or desiring to speak concerning this request is invited to attend the meeting.
We'll call our public comments to order. Is there anyone that wishes to speak about this request to rezone? Okay, we'll close this meeting. Is there a motion to approve this, this amendment? Motion made by Commissioner Wright, seconded by Commissioner Driver. I see no one in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-one votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. We have a docketing Highway Public Works Fund analysis for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Wright. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your financial statement memo is in your packet. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Wright, seconded by Commissioner Foster. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll jump now to, your written reports are in your packet. And is there a motion to approve our notaries?
No.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Foster. Let's vote.
Notary applications on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-one votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote?
And a squeaker, the notaries win.
It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right, we'll go to committee on committees. Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Committees met in its regular scheduled meeting, nine at 6:30 on December thirteenth, 2021. E-91 Board was, there's county mayor recommendation with Paul Hobbs Meyer for a four-year term and Archie P. McKinnis for a four-year term. It was joint approved, unanimous, I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Good. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rhodes. See no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sumner County Joint Economic Community Development Board, Tony Binnell, Business Community from Westmoreland, two-year term, recommendation of the county mayor. Frank Flynn, Greenbelt representative for two years. Mike Fusell, Business Community of Hendersonville, two-year term. They were grouped and approved. It was unanimous, and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Good. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tucker. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, Mr. Good.
Business at hand for next month, is that in your agenda? That's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Good. Education Committee, Mr. Sullivan.
No report.
Okay. Highway Commission, Mr. Hinton.
I've got a couple of things. Sumner, at the end of the year.
Hang on one second, Mr. Hinton. There you go, there you go.
Okay, the, well, the problem could have been, we've got all this import, all the problem with shipping and receiving, but we, we thought we were in trouble on salt, but it came in. We, we'll tell you this, we had a, we had our highway ready to blacktop. We didn't have no line paint and they, the state won't let you put down the highway without, without painting in seven days. So we had to delay the blacktopping of a road in Sumner County because we didn't have paint. I take that home, we in the cuss. Piping, concrete piping is going up, everything, everything is going up. We do have, we do have plastic pipe. The, we got paving, we spent $2,700,000 on paving. We striped 66 miles. The staff built bridges. And if you wonder why staff don't build more bridges, well, the bridge, the bridge cost about $90,000 a piece, even if we built our own road, widening roads, we had, cost about $400,000 per mile. And let that stick with everybody now because we, we putting in these subdivisions and everybody's complaining because the road's too narrow and all that kinds of, the county can't take that on. I mean, we expend ever, the whole budget for the county one year and never get all the roads widened. So you're gonna, we're gonna have to keep in mind as we go into approving more subdivisions and all that, that some of those requests for widening roads need to belong to the contractor. So we need to keep that in the back, in the back of our mind. And that's all I got. Everything's gonna, everything's gonna be all right. Everything come in, gas will go up and what else is new? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. General Ops, Michelle.
No report, sir.
Okay. Emergency Services, Mr. Driver.
Okay, we did discuss the item that's on the agenda tonight, but it did not move through our committee because we need not have a quorum. Do we still want to do this through our committee tonight?
Yep, it came through budget, sir. We can do it.
All right, and I did not see that on here. The, basically, Chief Miller came before us to ask that we have some increases in the ambulance costs for the county. He gave us a complete list of that and I don't believe he's here tonight to speak about it, but there was a long list of things and I'll just mention a few of those. Some of the medicines that they are having to carry on the ambulance, there's been a 300% increase in the cost of those. And the last bit, it's all, you know, related to everything going on with COVID and everything else in the world here. There were, there's a request on here, part of this is a request for charging for non-transport, where they show up somewhere. And I believe it was really, he talked about specifically limited to when they had to apply medicine of some kind. It's not just they show up and put an ace bandage on it, they're gonna charge for that or whatever else. But if they have to expend medicines for this, then they're gonna want to charge for that. Will be covered under most folks' insurance. And he gave the example here of they may have someone overdose and they have to give them Narcan, which is expensive. Then they wake up, they decide they don't want to go in the ambulance, they may have to go back to that very same person the very next day and give them Narcan again and they wake up and decide not to go in the ambulance. And we're, Sumner County are out for that, where their insurance can turn around and pay for that. There were a couple of other things there and all those, these are going up, most of the things he's asking for are covered by insurance. And I think that we discussed that there is a hardship way, if there's a person that doesn't have insurance, can't pay it, that we can take care of that as well. So we need to put this in the form of a motion.
Been five years since it was raised.
Been five years since rates have been raised. We need to put it in form of a motion. Okay, and basically on here, it just says, we make a motion to allow them to increase the ambulance transport rates for Sumner County.
Okay. Mr. Driver made the motion. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Kruger. I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Driver?
That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Driver. There's not a financial management report tonight. Legislative, Mr. Ring, and I would encourage you that 21-2112-07 should be under budget. So if you want to do five, six, and eight, then we'll, we'll allow Mr. Taylor to pick up, Commissioner Taylor to pick up.
I'll give one, I'll give that one up.
Okay.
2112-05, ratifying proposed amendments to Sumner County Comprehensive Growth Plan and forwarding the same to the Local Government Planning Advisory Committee, and I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Ring. Is there a second by Mr. Gomenden? I see no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Ring.
2112-06, meeting dates for upcoming county commission year 2022, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring. Is there a second? Excuse me, second by Commissioner Tucker? Got a little, little ahead of myself there. Ms. Kruger.
I just noticed that we might want to consider that November 21st, schools are out, that's the week of Thanksgiving, and schools are out that whole week. So in case anybody's traveling, that's, I think, my, kind of why the schools are taking that week off.
And if I could speak to this, one thing hasn't changed from when it came to legislative. We realized that the December date that we had picked was the third Monday, which is the week of Christmas, so we moved it back to the second week like we had done before. If you want to move the November back, we can do that, too. We just need a number five.
Would you like to offer that amendment, Ms. Kruger?
Yes, November 14th.
Okay, so it'll be November 14th. So the motion is to slide the November 2022 commission meeting to November 14th instead of the 21st. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Second by Commissioner Sullivan. See no one else in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment passes. I see no one else in the queue on the main motion. Thank you, Ms. Kruger, for catching that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Ring?
2112-08, rescinding and repealing the Private Acts of 1953, Chapter 30, which designated the process for the creation of private cemeteries in Sumner County, and instead placing such responsibilities with the planning commission and existing state law, an ISO move.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gomenden?
And if I can just briefly speak to that for those of you who are not familiar with it. Apparently, in 1953, we got the state to pass this law about how we would establish private cemeteries. Unfortunately, the process takes quite some time, possibly months. And if you've got somebody waiting to be buried, you don't want them hanging around in your living room for months while you're waiting to bury them. So, we want this, it'll, hopefully this will facilitate things and get it moving a little faster.
And if I could speak to one amendment to this before?
Right, hang on, hang on one second. Okay, go ahead.
Before we go forward, this should say at every place in their planning commission, Board of Zoning Appeal, and existing state law, because there will be more, really more circumstances where it'll go to the BZA. This is, this is the original version that was at legislative, and we didn't get the corrected version out in time. Sorry.
So, I'll make the motion to amend it.
Okay, can you say that again, Ms. Denon?
It will say Planning Commission.
Okay.
Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeal, and existing state law.
Okay.
And I'll make that motion to amend it.
All right, so Commissioner Ring offers the amendment. Commissioner Kruger seconds it. Just to be clear, I think what came out in our discussion in legislative was the fact that it's really difficult if you want to have a family cemetery. You can't find, it takes months when you don't, when you don't want to wait months to bury a loved one if you're doing a private family burial. So, this will accelerate that process and make it easier for people wanting to do that to communicate. So, the motion's been, or amendment's been offered by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. Mr. Goode?
Just one more clarification, Mr. Chairman. The maker of the motion is from California that keeps the deceased in their living room for months. So, I just want to make sure that we have it in there.
Thank you for that, Mr. Goode. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment passes. I see no one else in the queue to speak about the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
No, no more motion, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ring. We'll go to Budget Committee to Commissioner Taylor.
Yes, sir. As part of the report, am I ready, Mr. Kemp?
Yeah.
Okay, as part of the report, as you know, for the past couple of years, we've been trying to figure out a different way to address our rural fire in a way to ensure that, one, that they're properly funded so that they can do the job that they're tasked with doing. And we looked at a lot of different models from CTAS, lots of other areas over the emergency services for the past seven years. And what we found was, hands down, the best way to do it for us was the way we currently do it, supporting them, not trying to create one overall group because they work so well together. With that being said, we had set up a permanent funding source for them through the tax rate of $24,000 a year, which was great for their day-to-day operations. It does not cover large expenses, and that's what Highland was speaking about. They have three pieces of equipment that have gone down. They have no way to pay $400,000, $500,000 for that type of equipment. That's impossible. And it's impossible for them to continue that function as the only form of fire protection in that area. What we came up with on budgets was a way that in the spring, we would like to move two pennies from debt services over to general. And then what that'll allow us to do is about have $1.3 million this year to start funding it. And again, going back to how great they worked together, the chiefs all got together this summer, came up with a list prioritized of their heavy equipment that they needed, and did a great job of deciding who should be first and what order based on the needs. Highland's kind of moved to the front, obviously, with their repairs. With that being said, we can't necessarily vote on that tonight, but what I'm asking for is I make the motion that we make a commitment to them so that they can order that equipment today, because it won't be here for nine to 12 weeks, nine to 12 months, ordering it today. So, that if we wait until spring, that puts them about a year and a half out, and we know their equipment won't make it that long. So, I'm just asking that we make a motion that we make a commitment to them that we will fund it so they have a way to purchase it, ISO move.
Okay, hang on one second. Let me clarify.
It just needs to be in the minutes. It doesn't actually need, it needs to be a motion, but there will not actually be a resolution. It just needs to be noted in the minutes.
Okay, so we're making a motion to note in the minutes our commitment to our volunteer firefighters for the money needed for much-needed equipment and replacement. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor. I think Commissioner Wright, sorry, I saw him first, Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. 2112-07, this is a resolution appropriating $2,892,350 of our ARP money, and this is for hazard pay for EMS, Sheriff's Department, and Emergency Services, or ECC. And I think we're all aware of the different shortcomings we've had recently. Wilson County has had to cut ambulance service and scale back. At the point, at the time we were going to do it, Sheriff Weatherford was about 50 short in the jail, and they couldn't find anybody to work. And Chief Miller was down to where we had about 12 openings for EMS, and we were getting ready to have to shut down ambulances also. Mayor Holt made, within his authority, to give them an emergency increase of hazard pay for 15%. Because of this, we've eliminated all of the openings with the ambulance service. We're back at 100% there, and in fact, probably stole a couple from some other counties. But obviously, this is only good for the next two years. At that point, we'll have to figure some things out. But it does get us over at least the hurdle we have right now of losing emergency service workers. So, ISO move.
Second. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Mr. Hyde, you're in the queue.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions about this, things that I've heard. If the chairman of budget could maybe answer my questions.
Yes, sir.
One of the questions I heard, and let me say to begin with, I support this. I will vote yes. So, that's not a question. And as a matter of fact, if it was more money, I would support it. But should this have come to the County Commission first? Maybe that's a legal question.
Actually, sir, what, I can answer that one. The County Mayor has the authority to offer them to allow the expenditures of this additional money as long as they have the money in their budget currently to cover it. Because of the shortcomings in employees and FTEs, they did have the funds available to fund this, at least through the end of the year, in the fiscal year for the most part. What we're doing is, instead of using their general fund for it, we're going to use ARP money, which this is an allowable use of it. And that way, they can keep their savings in case we still need those savings throughout the year. So, it's more just to, to be smart budget-wise. It's a resource we have right now, and that way, we're not tapping into things that we may or may not have by the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Second question I have, and this may be to the, Mr. Longing. You alluded to the fact that we may have to work out something. Does that working out mean a tax increase? Or is our reserve adequate to handle this? I know we're sitting right now on a sizable reserve. Does this mean a tax increase?
No, sir, absolutely not. And in fact, what we've, because we're in such a strong fiscal position, we've been able to make savings through recalling bonds, doing different things. But also because, and again, I'll applaud Mr. Long and his group, because they're so conservative in their estimates of everything we've done for the past seven years, we're in a position, yes, sir, the reserves are plenty to make up for the difference if we needed to, but we'd rather keep those reserves in case we have the recession at some point that's going to hit. Based on just the conservative numbers we have right now, looking at the additional money that's coming in through what we project over the next year, and we're almost at a 90, a little bit over 98% collection rate right now, which is pretty amazing, having the previous year. There should be enough over the next two and a half years to start making up for that. It's still going to be tight because that's a big chunk of change. It's $3 million this year, and that's a recurring expense if we decide as a commission to make it permanent. But it is one that we believe we can work through in the budget process without having to look for an additional revenue source. Is that appropriate to say, David?
Can you hang on, Ms. Long? Yeah, there you go.
Right now, these are the COVID funds, and it is a temporary raise. Currently, the year is doing much better than we anticipated, I believe, over the next, because we can use these up to three years. I believe over the next three years, we can level it off over the time. In other words, we can use these for up to three years if need be. And over that time, with the growth and normalization, and you do have strong reserves, I believe you can get back into a state where you come back into a good budgetary balance without increasing taxes for this, if that answers your question.
Yes, that's sort of what I wanted to hear. The next question I have of you, though, is I know what our balance was from budget documents previously, but what are we sitting on right now, this day, in reserve?
I don't have that in my head, but I can get that for you, Mr. Hyde, if you want me to.
Can you give me a ballpark figure?
I can get you the exact amount in about, if you can give me two minutes, I'll pull up the website.
No, that's, that's all right. Would it be close?
I believe all in with hospital and everything, we're over 40 million, but that includes hospital funds, reserves, and everything.
Forty?
Forty, I believe, but I could be, I could look it up in just a minute, but that's all in somewhere around there. That would be with your hospital funds. And that may be, that may be cash, because there's some ARP funds too. Let me, let me just look it up, Mr. Hyde, and give you the number, actually.
I want to do.
Mr. Hyde, you will never get a ballpark figure from an accountant.
Well, I mean, the 40, I think is actually cash, and we had quite a bit of ARP cash in there that we can't use, so we'll just take. I can get you the exact number. Well, this thing may be not. There it is.
I didn't want to go through all this.
I would prefer, because I think that's actually high, because we have some ARP funds that's reserved, and we do have to use them for other purposes quite a bit. That's why I told you that. And unfortunately, it's going to take just a second. I may have to keep my son. We have a, if we could click the website. It's loading.
I'll take the estimate if that's.
The estimate, I believe, is very high because it includes a significant amount of that ARP funding starting here. That's the cash number, and I can give you the actual reserve number, because we received about $18 million worth of ARP money at the end of the year.
Well, I, I think you said what I was getting at.
Here we go. I've got it, Mr. Hyde.
Okay.
Sometimes I double guess. It's $43 million. That was not, it was around $43 million.
$43 million more. That's inexcusable to be.
I was a little conservative. It's around 43.
That's pretty close.
We picked up the same trend, and he's always a little bit conservative, Mr. Hyde, on his list.
At least it's on the high side. But let me just say, in closing, that these people that we are giving a raise to don't get enough money as it is. And my questions were not directed toward that. I wish we had more to give them, and I would even support that. But I just want to make sure that this is not a cause without steady on the front end of another big tax increase. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. I see no one else in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir, last one. 2112-09, this is our nonprofit appropriations. Each year, we have a committee that meets, and they help divvy out the money that we have set aside for nonprofits, 501Cs. Please bear in mind on this one, there is one exception we made on budget. Westmoreland's, thank you, Senior Center, wow, had a moment there, is not, was not in a position fiscally to be able to accept the money yet. They're going through a transition and a change. We did allocate their money still aside, and we're keeping it in that fund, just on the offhand chance that they can get it together in time to apply for this year. So, that'll, that'll go all the way up until June 30th. So, ISO move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Is there a second? Second by Ms. DeWitt. See no one in the queue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And hold on, we can't run out yet. We have an announcement from Ms. DeWitt.
I just wanted to remind everyone, you should have received an invitation a week or two ago, and then our County Mayor sent it again today. There's an invitation to visit the Music City Airport this Thursday at 4:00. We have a group that is working with the airport and the Airport Authority to discuss ways that that entity can be just an important part of our, of our county and the economic development. So, please make an effort to be there. I know we got a lot going on. It's 4:00 on Thursday, and your invitation is in your email. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeWitt. Is there a motion? Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Foster, all in, or second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in first, aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.